So thank you, I called this meeting to order. Thank you for everybody joining the Town of Westwood Planning Board Meeting. Today is April 7th, 2020. And I want to welcome everybody to this Planning Board Meeting. I am the Board Chair, Brian Gorman, and I will now call this meeting to order. The other Board members will be calling in as well. So we have Chris Pfaff on the line, Dave Atkins on the line. Debbie Conant is not able to join, and Bill Delay will be joining. As well as all applicants, staff, and public are participating remotely pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the COVID-19 public health state of emergency. This public meeting of the Westwood Planning Board is fully conducted by way of remote participation. The public can view this meeting being streamed by Westwood Media Center, viewable on Westwood's media YouTube station, and on Comcast Channel 12, or Verizon Channel 42. However, there is no participation through the TV or YouTube. If you would like to participate, please use the Zoom link, or call 888-475-4499, or 877-853-5257. I ask that the audio be muted when participants are not speaking, so that the audio is as clear as possible. For each item, the Board will hear from the applicant. The staff comments will be comment and questions from the public for certain sections of the meeting. And at that time, I will ask anyone participating through Zoom to send a chat request, and the system operator will line open will open the audio for you in order for receipt. Then I will ask each caller by the last four digits of the phone number if you have any questions or comments. This way, everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. If you have no comments, you can say that you have no comments. We will unmute each phone as we go through the callers. And as a reminder, the best way to stay informed of all meetings, events, and emergency notifications is to go to the Town of Westwood's website and to click on the "Notify Me" on the homepage. Abby, is there any change to the meeting agenda tonight? And in addition, would you like to add anything else to my introduction to the meeting with regards to dialing in and participation?
Sure, yes. Thank you for joining us. Bill Delay is here now, so Bill has joined us by phone. So you have the four Planning Board members are here. Just ask everyone to mute themselves. Meet yourselves, so there's no interference.
We can hear you.
Okay, and then when we get to the public comment part, as Brian says, everyone will get a chance to talk. So you should, you can go to either the top or the bottom of your screen, where it says "More," and when we get to that, there is a chat function. Or if you click on the Participants button, a screen will show up on the right side, and at the bottom of the right, there's a "Raise Your Hand" option. So we can call you through that way when we get to the public comment section.
Okay, great. And anything else, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda. So the first item that we have is
Oh, and if people could mute themselves also.
Deborah and Brian are here. Deborah and Brian.
Oh, Debbie, looks like Debbie has joined us.
Who was just speaking?
I'm not sure, it may have been
Yeah, so we moved to the first, I can move to the first agenda item, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the first agenda item is the Brigham Women's Phase 2 One Hundred Brigham Way. So is the applicant here, this is a Continued from March 17th Meeting, University Station Consistency Review for Phase 2 of a 4-story addition in parking garage as originally approved in the Project Development Review granted May 2017.
Yes.
Okay, so the first item, the Brigham Women's, this is the this is the consistency review. In 2017, the Brigham Women's did have a project development review for the full project, that's Phase 1 and Phase 2, that was approved by the Planning Board. And at that time, you did provide a condition that the applicant returned to you for a consistency review focusing on the architectural facade details for the new addition in the garage. And that's what's before you here tonight. So I'll turn it over to the Brigham Women's team to summarize the changes they've made since your last meeting on March 17th. And then also joining us tonight, you have your professional peer reviewer, which is Beta Group. We have Merrick Turner here, Greg Lucas to help with any traffic questions, and Mike Sinessi, he's with DSK Architects.
Good evening, Abby, this is Steve Dempsey. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Executive Director of Real Estate Planning and Construction for Brigham Women's Hospital. I'm glad to be back again before you tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Abby, I think has set the legal context, so I won't dwell on that. It just, I'm gonna speak for just a minute, and then yield to Brian McKenna of Canon Design, and Mark Clougher of Clougher Martin Design Group, who are gonna go through the details, and would be available to answer more questions on the design. We are seeking approval of our 50,000 square foot expansion. Just very quickly for context, many in the members, residents of the town know that we have been operating as a medical office building. And we are providing imaging, primary care, and multi-specialty services to the community. And we are seeking to expand. Our expansion will allow us to provide additional services, greater access to the community, continued cost reduction, and to bring more innovation out to this community. And I'm gonna yield now to Brian McKenna, who will proceed with the design discussion.
Coming up, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Brian McKenna, I'm the Principal Architect with Canon Design. We were the architects for Phase 1, and are glad to be back here as the architects for Phase 2. What, Abby, just if you can see me, I'll do this when, to switch a slide.
Okay.
But just as a high level, what you're gonna see in the next few slides is a recap of some of the information we shared at our March 17th presentation. The slide in front of you just gives a reference slide of the site, which University Ave is to the upper half of the page. The train tracks are to the lower half. And any plan view you see tonight, this will be the orientation of that. You'll notice in most of our Phase 1 buildings is to the right of the plan, with the expanded Phase 2 and the garage to the left, consistent with what we had shared back in 2017. I will add that the plan in the lower right-hand corner, the red arrows depict the vehicular movement. There are, it's tough to see, but there are red dots that depict the pedestrian movement, which is consistent with 2017, when we were connecting through the hotel from the Amtrak station into the green space and across the development. Abby, go ahead. So as a reference for the plan itself, the existing building is shaded gray to the right. The expansion is a 4-story, 50,000 square foot expansion. The programs, as were talked about in 2017, will be an expansion of the radiology department on the first floor, including MRI and CT. The second floor will be an expansion of the clinics, AKA doctors' offices, similar to what they have in Phase 1. The third floor will be a day surgery program with a direct connection, convenience connection to the garage via a bridge for that patient population. And then the fourth floor will be specialty clinics, and some of the day surgery support spaces. You'll see here, the garage entrance is consistent off of that, I don't know, I don't really know what to call it, other than the extension road that comes off Brigham Way. It was developed in Phase 1, that looped into the parking lot. Now it'll loop in the garage. The elevations, for reference, we showed these were the elevations from 2017, in which we used a rain screen system. We had the weight granite on the base, then we had the Oco skin on the first floor, and a cement tissue fiber board on the second floor. Our intention is to use those same materials. We contacted manufacturers, and as we know it, they still exist. So our new building will be consistent with that language. The scale of this, I'll take note of the 2-story, the 4-story addition in the middle, and then the garage of approximately the same height. Depicted in front of you are the newer renderings of Phase 2, with the 2-story on the top elevation, the 2-story existing building on the right, our expansion building in the middle, and then the garage to the other side. Again, materialistic, you'll see that later on. It is consistent with Phase 1. The materials are intended to match that, to make it read as one building and uniform across. The next elevations are the elevations of the garage. On the left is the elevation that would face the condos, where there's a significant, you'll see the abreviations depicted that are there, I believe right now, from the condo association, and trees and more plantings that are on our property, which Mark will talk to in a little while. To the right is the other elevation that would be between the courtyard. So the bridge is that square that's sort of in the middle of the plan, connecting that third floor of the garage to the third floor surgical. The next two elevations are the short ends of the building, which are consistent again with what we're showing in 2017. And you'll notice at the bottom of the slide is the front elevation, in which we, based on the simple geometry of the first building, we sort of simplified the second building with a geometric square and ribbon windows, similar to the first building, consistent language-wise. Here are the renderings from 2017, which you'll see in the left, the Phase 1 building, and at that point, what we depicted as a potential for Phase 2 to the right. And in the lower left, another view looking across Phase 1 at Phase 2 with the garage, and then along the backside. Again, this is the new building, where we go from Phase 1 across to Phase 2 and the garage. And obviously, our rendering techniques have developed a little bit. And then the lower left-hand corner is the Phase 2 main building. And then the lower right is that back facade that would face the tracks.
Mark? So really quickly, the landscape idea is to continue the landscape that's already existing in the park that the master developer has built, and to fill it in along the driveway that connects Brigham Way with the parking structure. There was a question last time about the planting in between the parking garage and the Phase 2 of this project. And it is on the north side of the building. And what we did in the design of that was to use trees that are typically found on like the forest understory. So they're plants that are used to growing in lower light levels, and in both, in terms of like what's on the ground, as well as the tree types and the shrub types. So we're cognizant of the fact that it gets lower light, but we've chosen to use a plant palette that allows that to still thrive. There's also a question about the configuration of the pathway in this zone between the two buildings. And it's arranged that way such that the trees can have a mitigating effect for the winds that go between the two buildings. So that's why it's not drawn and won't be built as sort of a straight line. It has a little bit of a meander to it. It's still gonna be possible to see from end to end, no problem. But that's why it's in the configuration that it is. So I think that basically sums up what the landscape is. It's a continuation of what we had done on Phase 1. There's screening along the south side of the garage toward the abiding apartment building. And those are filled in with large canopy trees, as well as lower plants that are blending into the buffer that was built by the apartment project previously. So if I'm not mistaken, I turn it over to Merrick at this point.
If there's one more.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I think this slide is pretty straightforward. As I mentioned before, materiality is a consistent language from the first building. Our architectural detailing is consistent to Phase 1 with the rain screen systems and the strip windows with the materials. We're also bringing this material into the small elements of the garage. The garage will be a precast garage, which we're, if you look on the left, we're looking to do yourself form liner, which will add texture to the garage, so it's not just a plain concrete garage, which we think will add a little more background to the landscape elements on there. And in the elements where we have the elevators or stairs, we'd look to, if we reduce windows or elements such as that, it would be the same material as on the building. They have a consistent, small, consistent language across the building. The bottom renderings depict where these materials are. The roof screen on the new building will be the same as the roof screen on the previous building. And from beginning to end, it would be a consistent language across this building. So I guess, Merrick, I think this is where we're going to sort of transition. But just as a recap, we have revised the plans based on some of the data comments, and returned those with depicting clerical things or shadow boxes or various pieces after the March meeting. The parentheses, and Mark, I forgive that, I couldn't remember if you mentioned it, but there was a point where there were, there were less trees along the side by the condos, which was a request of the fire department, because the garage was an open-air garage. It wasn't required to be sprinkled. We are now sprinkling the garage, so the trees have, will come back into play on all that side.
Yep, that's correct.
And I think even the revised, Merrick, we had discussions about the revised lighting plan across the campus. The lighting is consistent with what was installed on Phase 1. And when the studies were done uniformly, we reached the goals that Merrick had outlined in their request in the letter. I will also say just briefly on LEED for this LEED 4 version statement, there was a comment at the Planning Board about portable tanks. And we have, we will put this, our building will be required to meet LEED Silver as a DON implications. And in that, there will be a lot of focus on energy use, water savings, you know, charging stations and parking. We're happy to go through the checklist. Portable tanks was one that was considered, but the surface area of the garage wasn't all that conducive to, you know, make it beneficial. So we have other mitigating or other sustainability factors in the building. But it's a high priority for Brigham and for this building, that this become LEED Silver. So that is our goal.
Yeah, Brian, this is Merrick Turner. Just tell me when you want me to step in here. I can talk to the rest of these items relative to our comments, or you can bring us down to the crosswalk. So what, you know, whatever you'd like me to do here.
You go right ahead.
Okay, so this is Merrick Turner with Beta Group, the peer reviewer for the town, as Abby mentioned at the outset of the meeting. I've got a colleague with me from Beta tonight, Greg Lewis. Greg is one of the traffic engineers in our office, and Mike Sinessi, who's been doing the architectural review. So just to touch on the memorandum first, we got responses to the original comments from the applicant. We went through and included those responses into our updated memo along with an updated status from Beta, which is, if you have the memo in front of you, if you happen to have the memo in your front of you, the applicant responses are italicized, and our current status is in bold. And what you'll see from that memo is, as a result of that back and forth with the applicant, we feel like we're substantially resolved on the issues that we pointed out, as Brian just mentioned, out some of the items where the applicant has updated the plans. We were satisfied with those responses and so forth. So the memo is fairly clean, and where it left some items were relative to three potential conditions that we would suggest. The first one also touches on lighting. There was one issue in the architectural comments, which talked about the possibility in the garage where turning vehicles might have a situation where lights from headlights are basically coming out, lighting out from the garage. And the concern was impact to the condominium. And the applicant did look at that. They feel that they have taken appropriate steps to mitigate that issue by including a height in the parapet wall, which should be high enough to prevent that headlight intrusion or extrusion, however you like to look at it outside the building. In all likelihood, we think that this will be okay. The walls, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, are about 42 inches high that surround the garage. Okay, so, yeah, as far as the conditions are concerned, there were three that showed up in our memorandum. The first just was relative to light intrusion, extrusion from the garage. We think that'll be okay, but really, just as an assurance, we're suggesting the inclusion of a condition there that should an issue occur in the future, the applicant is committing to come back and address that. So that was one item. The second item was on the O&amp;M plan. And I believe, as the applicant indicated in the previous meeting, they would prefer to come back with an updated O&amp;M plan once the actual hazardous material requirements are known that's related to the actual pharmaceuticals and so forth that will be used relative to the services provided in the building. And they won't know that for another month or two. And in the past, the O&amp;M plan has often been dealt with as part of the building permit or as part of the occupancy permit as well. So that was a second suggestion for a potential condition. And then the third condition relates to signage, which again, all the signage details were not there in full dimension. That is often, on other developments, come back as a subsequent package once the full details are actually determined. So those were the three items that were outstanding in the memo. And we felt that all of those could reasonably dealt with via conditions. Just to touch on a couple of other items that were raised by the Board at the last meeting. There was a question about having a raised crosswalk across the driveway where the new connection to the park occurs. The applicant is indicated that they would prefer to leave that at grade. The reasons for that were related to impacts to drainage and impacts to maintenance activities such as snow plowing and so forth. I think that on balance, we are inclined to agree with that. In terms of safety, there are two fairly close sharp radius turns here. So we don't see any real speed issue along this driveway to and from the garage. So we don't see a whole safety benefit in terms of raising the crosswalk. And if it does create other issues of concern, then we'd be inclined to say, okay, leave it at grade as it has elsewhere in the development. That's not to say that it couldn't be done. If there was a strong feeling about that. But on balance, I think we're inclined to agree that leaving it at grade is certainly simpler from a long-term operation, maintenance standpoint. And there's not a safety detriment to doing that. As far as water consumption is concerned, the applicant did come back with a memo detailing the relative or the order of magnitude of water demand from the addition versus the development as a whole. And the memo essentially states that that when you look at the actual demand of the facility versus what the facility through its design actually replenishes to the watershed, the actual demands of the extension, which were all considered in the original planning and permitting, are very, very, very small relative to the net replenishment that comes back to the watershed. So there really is no impact from the addition relative to the original permitted development. And there's certainly no impact relative to any kind of impact on the watershed. And then the last question that was raised was one of traffic. And we went back and thought some more about that. And one of my colleagues, Greg, can certainly add to this if there are further questions. But in essence, our opinion is the same as we reported to the Board in the last meeting. We feel the Board can be comfortable in terms of no impacts or no anticipated impacts as a result of the traffic from the addition. Essentially, for the development as a whole, no issues have been reported to date regarding the traffic operations, either at the intersection serving the immediate Brigham driveway or through the site in general. The development as a whole was planned to be built out to a total of about 2.1 million square feet. Once the Brigham expansion is completed, that will bring the overall development to about 1.7 million square feet, which is about 400,000 feet less. And the anticipation is, is that there's essentially about 100,000 square feet of additional sites available to develop. So in the end, the full build-out will be about 1.8 million square feet of about 2.1 million square feet. So in terms of traffic planning, there is an overall deficit there for what was originally permitted. And the Brigham site with its addition was part of that original plan, and therefore, part of the 1.8 million square feet that I'm describing. So in general, there is a smaller build-out here, and a correspondingly smaller traffic impact within development area. The hotel and the condo that are adjacent to this site were smaller than was originally planned. We'd also add that the nature of the medical facility is such that the peak operation and peak demands around the medical facility are not at the same time as other elements of the development. They tend to be complementary in later, in nature. So we'd expect the bulk of activity around the medical facility to be between, say, 10:00 in the morning, and perhaps 11:00 for a morning peak, and then 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon for an evening peak. So again, not in line with the overall peaking of the development activity. And lastly, even based on full build-out, the intersection at University Ave and Brigham Way does have spare capacity. So for all of those reasons, we really don't feel that there'll be any traffic issue here, and feel that the Board should be comfortable in terms of traffic impacts from the addition. So that was the last element of questions raised, and we'd be glad to come back to any of those items if, as when the Board has some questions for us. So that's the last slide that we were gonna comment on, I think, Abby. So that's the last, um, slide that we were going to comment on, I think, Abby.
Yep. Um, so Brian, can you hear me? I would start with, um, planning board member discussion now.
Sounds great.
Brian, are you there?
Yes, that's fine by me.
No, I think you're talking to Brian Gorman, right?
Brian Gorman?
I don't see Brian on
I
the list. I don't see his one of the phone numbers here.
Then Chris, do you want to start with any questions that you may have?
Yeah, I, I had a couple, uh, questions for, uh, the applicant and Beta. First off, uh, I was one of, I was the board member who brought up the area between the new parking garage and the new building. In looking at this, I, I love the, the plants that you're planning on putting there that are appropriate for sunlight. Um, I'm just wondering, the, uh, the actual sidewalk itself, is there possible we could make it a little smoother, these ninety-degree turns? I, I think tend to be very problematic, especially in the winter. And as it's been pointed out to me many times, people don't turn ninety degrees, um, when walking on a sidewalk. Is there a way to make it a little more, uh, gradual, um, kind of more of a curve instead of, uh, angles for that sidewalk? Um, it's just a thought, it's gonna, if those are planting areas, it's just a, a place for a thing debris to collect in, uh, ninety-degree corners and snow removal, there may be a little more problematic also with corner uh, areas. I don't know if that's a, a planting area, if that's at grade level, on that sidewalk. So that was one question I had. I, I don't know who that question is for frankly, if that's for Brian or, um, Merrick or Mike. I don't know.
Yeah, well, Chris, this is Merrick. I, I think from, from, from our standpoint and, and, um, yeah, I, I wouldn't see a problem with, with, with not having a ninety-degree return. I think, I, I like the idea of, of the offset in the walk in terms of that, that wind tunnel.
I do too.
So yeah, I, I think that, 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 that that could certainly be effectively made to sort of a forty-five degree change of direction, s- a smooth forty-five, if you will, curved, and still have that same benefit.
Yeah, I still, I like, I like the effect that they've achieved here by alternating the sides that the plants will be planted on. I was just, in looking at it, it looks a little unnatural to me. That walkway, um, it's not a big deal. It's just something that came to mind. Next was, um, on the south elevation, uh, the, um, parking area closest, the, the tree changes. You, you changed one way and now you've changed back. Can, um, I think Mark was, or Brian was presenting that. Can you articulate that again? What those trees are going to be like facing the condos?
This is Brian McKenna.
Yeah.
The question was, when, when we were talking with the fire department, they had a question of access to the garage on that side.
Okay.
And wanted the trees removed. And then when they, subsequently, when they learned that the garage is going to be fully sprinkled, that they were fine with that and said, okay, you can, you know, the trees can go back. They did. It was more of an access from them.
Okay. All right, good. So they're back. Um, and, and at this elevation, this rendering, it, it kind of indicates the trees are about halfway up the parking garage. Is that at full maturity of the intended trees or is that at planting? Or what? Is the anticipation that it'll be fully covered by a large tree or is that just too tall to imagine? Four stories.
I'm gonna go to Mark Crawford. Are you still on the phone?
I, I had a feeling you were gonna give this one to me. So they'll go in smaller because the root, really what's gonna limit them is the size of the root ball. And, and also the, the transplant hope is much better to put in a younger, smaller tree. But eventually, yes, they will grow up, um, and could very possibly be as tall as the parking garage um, and, and fairly quickly. So that, that is the idea there.
Okay. I'm just particularly sensitive to the residents who are living fairly adjacent to it. So just wanted to make sure we know what.
There is already a, a line of, um, hardwood bidey that the condominiums put in, which will be retained. So those are staying, they're outside of the construction zone.
Okay. Next, uh, Mike Sinessi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Mike, I, I wanted to address this to you because I know you were obviously heavily involved in the first iteration. Uh, can you articulate whatever changes you're seeing from the first renderings to the second? Or identify whatever changes that you see as maybe not significant, but different from the first time in 2017 that we looked at these?
Sure, sure. Um, I think that the, uh, the earlier, with all respect to the applicant, the earlier rend- renderings envisioned a perhaps a bulkier building. And I think that the scale has, has improved significantly. I am much happier that the garage and the phase two addition are detached and connected by a bridge only rather than the rendering, uh, uh, as it showed in the prior rendering, showed the two, uh, perhaps more connected. That gave a much larger and bulkier, uh, perception. The relationship of the, uh, materially there, uh, the phase two addition is much more consistent or appears to be more consistent with the phase one addition, uh, and they work nice, nicely together, uh, with sort of the dark values and the lighter values, materials, uh, and the consistent base. And I think that the, uh, transition to the garage, the precast parking garage with a, uh, with the form liner, uh, provides some measure of relief again. The word might be dematerializing or reducing the scale of the overall development by creating some interest and variety across. That answers your question.
Yeah, no, it does. And, uh, finally, architecturally speaking, do you see that this maintains a continuity with the entire project area? Um, as was intended from the original zoning bylaws, that all the buildings would have a, a relationship to one another?
I do. Uh, the applicant was, uh, uh, asked to incorporate the stone that you see in the center of the image, upper center of the image, uh, early in the, in the works, uh, in phase one, and they've maintained that consistently through, uh, perhaps the lower, uh, the lower, uh, renderings, both images, one from the, um, the, uh, north and one from the, uh, from, from the east and one from the west. They, uh, they show that base, the, the base of the building being used consistently around. And, uh, again, the, the upper materials are consistently used, but not monolithically used so that they break up that, uh, overall elevation. And they are consistent with the types of materials being used elsewhere in the park.
Great, thank you. And I had just one last question with regard to the raised sidewalk. There is a sidewalk, I was looking at the Google Maps, that is, um, kind of entering, as you went to the current parking lot, surface parking lot. The, the sidewalk as it goes over to the, uh, um, the park, is that a raised parking, I mean, uh, sidewalk now? I don't know who can answer that for me.
Chris, could you just describe the location again? This is.
Well, if you, if you pull in Brigham Way and you confront the building, you take a right to go park in the, um, the medical office area, it, it'll be replaced with the new building. Um, but currently, as you, as that driveway turns left so you can get into the parking area, there is a sidewalk there. And to my eye, it looks like it's possible that it is raised currently. So I just wanted to, it, it may very well not be, and if it's not, then it's a moot point.
Yeah.
But I was trying to identify where is the closest raised sidewalk we have? Is it over by, uh, Not Your Average Joe's or Del Frisco's?
Yeah, I don't think there were any, uh, uh, that I, that I can recall on this side. The only one I can recall in the development right now is in fact over, um, I, 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 I believe it was David's Bridle. It was, it was south of Target in that bank of the retail development. There was one, there was one raised crosswalk there, but I believe that's the only one. There was, there was talk of having one going between, um, the two restaurants, like B and C, um, which is Not Your Average Joe's and, uh, I forget the name of the other restaurant there.
I think, right, I think what we did there is we kept the concrete, um, sidewalk continuing through the asphalt parking lot.
It was stamped, right.
So that, so that it was identifiable that the drivers in the car were encroaching on a walking area, something different than a, um, parking area.
And I believe that was the intention here. I, I think that's how the response was described. Um, if there's someone from the, the, uh, the applicant side that perhaps clarify that. Perhaps Lisa? I think the intention here was to treat this the same as, as the one, um, uh, by Not Your Average Joe's.
Okay, um, I, I noticed. There is no striping. Uh, it's just the stamped asphalt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Is that Lisa? Yeah.
Hello?
Hi, Lisa?
Hello?
Hi, yes, we can hear you. Is this Lisa?
Hi, yes, Abby?
Yes.
Yes, this is Lisa. Sorry about that. I guess my connection's not great. So the intention with this crosswalk, um, will be, uh, there will be accessible ramps that, um, from the sidewalk level will ramp down to the roadway elevation and, um, it will be s- striped with pavement marking for a typical, uh, crosswalk pattern similar to what's, um, out there right now across the street, um, between the Not Your Average Joe parking lot and the front of the MOB as well as the crosswalking. So it will be striped.
Okay. I, I see that, um, the striping on every, it's funny, it's everywhere except the one sidewalk that goes from the side of the, uh, hotel straight out through the parking lot to university. Those are not striped. Those are just the stamped uh, concrete or stamped asphalt. So, that's fine. I see it's striped everywhere else. It's not raised. I understand the concerns and I certainly don't want to create a problem with snow removal or water runoff. So, um, I just wanted to identify that there are no other raised areas. We're not violating some continuity within the project. And that's it for my questions.
Okay, great. Um, Dave, do you have any questions?
Yes, um, so kind of continuing the sidewalks. So I just want to make sure the original, um, condition five of the original approval requires that, um, the sidewalks be raised across the entrances to the garage and loading areas and all. So I mean, the whole point is to, if you're like in a wheelchair, you shouldn't have to dip down and into the roadway and all that. So I can see where some of these, where these are not, it's not across the entrance, but I just want to clarify that, uh, is that the case? Like, are we, um, is it consistent with the requirement of this project that the sidewalks be raised across all the, uh, across any roadway?
Um, this is Merrick David. I, I think that that condition as it was originally developed, um, um, has been met in, in, in the sense that to the loading docks at the rear, the sidewalk, the sidewalk was raised across that and the, and the new loading dock that's, um, uh, immediately behind the extended building and in, and you may recall that there was an entrance at the rear of the building, uh, an entrance or an exit from the garage at the rear of a building. I believe that that was the, the intention in terms of a raised sidewalk being at that entry-exit point because there was a walk that continued towards the back of the garage and the stairwell a- at that time. So with that entry-exit point gone, that aspect to the condition doesn't apply anymore. So I think, I think that's my recollection of where that originated. And then as far as the front, I could take a quick look online, um, um, in a moment, but, um, in the corner of the, uh, entry-exit point to the, the garage is maintained on the westerly side, I guess, it, that, that's maintained again today. I don't believe that that was a raised crosswalk as it was originally approved in the, in the application in 2017.
Okay, I don't, um, I don't have any other questions really.
And Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
Let me just. Let me just make sure he's unmuted. All right, here he is. Sorry, Bill, I just unmuted you.
Okay, uh, so anyway, the scale looks good. Uh, again, alternative energy, I, I don't think we're doing anything with that and, uh, but and if we're not, I guess, we can't force that, um, issue. But, uh, so other than that, I think the project looks good. Thanks.
Yeah, and so for myself, all of my questions were answered. Um, I had questions with regards to the, um, the headlights at the, at the garage, the con- continuity of the aesthetics across the project and the sidewalk. So all my questions were answered by, um, by the previous items. So, um, uh, with that, I think we would move on to public comment, Abby. So do you wanna, you have the screen up with the number and could you manage that part?
Yes, so if there's anyone, um, from the public now, um, you can, um, put your name in the chat and we'll call on you or raise your blue hand. I see, um, if you go to the participant view and then at the bottom right, you can raise your hand. I see that Steve Olonoff has his hand up. So let me just, um, unmute Steve. And then, um, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Steve Olonoff, fifty-two Glan Dora Road, uh, associate member of the Planning Board. So if you can go to, uh, L, L zero three, that, uh, plan, that you had up before.
Uh, which one is that?
Uh, the one with the red lines for showing the, the L zero three. Right, uh.
This.
Yeah, did you have a, an enlarged version of that?
Is it getting bigger on your screen?
Yeah. All right, so, well, first of all, I want to thank Chris for bringing up about the sidewalk, uh, between the garage and the, uh, building. Yeah, that should have a nice curve to it. People shouldn't be walking, you know, like soldiers in a parade, making, you know, sharp right turns and left turns and that sort of thing. My other concern though is the small parking lot that's created right in front of the building. It's a dead-end parking lot. So if anyone goes in there and it's full, there's really, uh, no way for them to get enough to make a U-turn. Uh, you have that red arrow makes, makes it look very easy. You just turn around and go out. But actually, you'd have a tough time making a U-turn there and getting back out or forcing a lot of people to unexpectedly have to back out that distance. So my, my question is, uh, first of all, what, what is the purpose of having this small lot when you have a large parking garage to begin with? And I can understand the, uh, handicap spots, but what the, on the other side, there are, what, eight spots? And, and how are they to be used? I assume that there would be short-term parking, uh, but you'd want to let everyone know what signs there. You just don't want people coming along and saying, oh, you know, I can park right in front of the building and, and turn in there hoping to grab some, a space there, finding that the spaces are taken and then being forced to, to back out and then go into the parking garage. So, uh, if that's the purpose, and I'd like to know, first of all, you know, why is, is, is this, uh, lot so unnecessary? Because it used to have an exit where you see the red line going in and turning. There used to be a used to be a, another way there going back to the roadway. So I'm questioning is, is why don't we have an exit there so people don't have to turn around and they can just drive right out? Uh I, I think it's uh also important for emergency vehicles, I know the fire department, uh hopefully they wouldn't drive in there, but they would be forced to back out and they don't like to do that. So uh those, those are my questions, or, or why, why is that there? Why isn't that uh, that used to be there or the old design, that little turnout? Uh and if it's going to be like this, I, I think you're gonna need signage necessary, uh the signs would be necessary to uh keep people from just driving in there who don't really, really need those uh, either the handicap spaces or the other spaces. And I have another question, do you want me to go to that and come back or? Does someone want to answer, and uh that question?
Does, does someone from the applicant side want to take that or?
This is Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, uh so this is Lisa with VHB, um the, the surface parking lot in the front, um there is a bump out that allows for the um vehicles to maneuver to exit if the spaces are filled. Um the reason why that existing uh um curb, curb cut that um uh Steve mentioned was eliminated was to, to eliminate the confusion from, for patients to access the parking garage um and to create a little bit more green space and continuity for that landscaping island in the front. Um there, there, I, I don't know if um Steve Dempsey wants to uh elaborate more, but um there is currently no um plans or no, no differentiate, it does not differentiate between short-term parking and long-term parking anywhere on the site currently. So technically, anyone could park in those front eight spots.
And again, the, the uh, the little bump out there at the end is really if, if in the cars in the last spot on either side backs out, they need that to back the rear of their car into, but for someone just driving in, that really doesn't help them turn around.
So, so um, yeah, so Steve, this is Merrick. Um, I, I wonder if, if there might be something that could be done to just alleviate that? I mean, i- i- essentially, there is, there is a little bit more parking um um than, than is theoretically necessary here. Um you could certainly take one space and just stripe it um for no parking so that there was a, a little bit of dead space there um to, to alleviate or facilitate someone uh pulling in and backing out into that little recess that's created. So that would ensure that, 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 that option was available, a little, little more simply perhaps. The other thing that you could do, if there was real concern about removing one space is, is really create one extra space, it would involve taking a little green space away, but where that little recess is created, if that were extended toward the driveway and, and, and that area striped, um you could create a little um dead space there for that, for that same reason, that it would allow someone to pull in, back up and pull out a little more simply. Um my preference would be, I think, for the former, um if, 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 if there's a real concern there. So I would offer that up, um and perhaps the applicant has a, has a, a comment.
So I would suggest that if those spaces aren't really needed, eliminate them, make the uh green area wider and, and make the parking lot wider so that.
Well, I don't think we're saying that, Steve. I don't think we're saying that the spaces, I, I think that would be, that would take us to the wrong side of the equation, I'm saying plus to minus one here.
Yeah, well, I was asking for them to justify why they, what those parking spaces were and, and why they wouldn't just be designated for short-term parking, you know, like fifteen minutes, you know, pick-up, drop-off kind of thing. Uh otherwise, what, what happens is whenever you have a, a parking garage, but you have surface parking right near it, the people always run, get, try to get the surface parking in front of the building first, then when they don't succeed, they uh drive into the garage and that's a lot of wasted uh energy, gas, uh and, you know, in this case, if the cars are backing up, that creates a additional hazard. So, so I would just question the, the thought about, you know, why are those spaces even there?
Uh this is Steve Dempsey again, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um I was, I was, I can comment, uh Mr. Olunoff, that um, and thank you for your comments, I, I remember from you from a couple of years ago, you had the same safety concerns and we took those to heart. We stared at this particular section of the parking lot for a long time. Uh every space is important to us uh because it, it increases access to our patients. Um and uh uh the idea of giving up a lot of spaces is, would be very concerning to us. We can certainly look at, take uh follow-through on Merrick's s- suggestion, I think it's, it's a, it's a solid one, we could look at that. Um we determined after a while that, that, that this part of the parking lot needed to be isolated because it need, that the entries uh particularly for folks who would be arriving and were unfamiliar with the site, needed to be simplified. So we decided to eliminate uh a, a turn-in, turn-out uh, you know, act, uh connector to the, to, to the frontage road and um I think we, we ended up with a safer plan. I would agree with you that um it, having a dead end is not ideal, but it was certainly the safest alternative to us uh to provide um obvious access and, you know, kind of a cleaner arrival uh and departure. But if it's, if it, uh we, we're glad to follow up with, with Merrick on, on that suggestion of, of giving up a single space, that's yeah, fairly immaterial to us, we, we could, we could look at that.
And so when we plot of that, uh I would say a single place wouldn't be enough for someone to back in and have enough room, you'd need more than a single space, uh maybe one and a half or two full spaces. So if someone comes in all the way to the end, uh they could get in and out user. Uh otherwise, asking them to squeeze in, uh either backing in or going forward into just a single space that they just intend to back out of, and I don't think that's, you're gonna have to make it a little bit wider.
All right, we, we, we could look at uh a, a little more than a, than a, than a space, um uh appreciate your comment.
All right, now one more thing I had is on the other side of the building, is the same sort of situation. Uh I believe the, the last time we, we went over this, the uh, the uh parking lot at the end there, we get to the condos, that was blocked off with emergency uh barriers that only uh could be used by fire uh equipment in, in emergencies. If that's the same case, you, you sort of have the same sort of dead-end problems with automobiles getting to the end, finding the no spaces and having to turn around. Is, is that still the case?
Call on Lisa again.
Uh so it is still the case that um the connection from the condo side to the Brigham and Women MOB side, there is only our emergency access. Um again, the drive aisle is twenty-four foot wide, we, we could take a look at blocking off one, one space um to, in case all those spaces in the back are, are full.
Could we, could we, um Mrs. Merrick again, could, could we go to the landscape plan perhaps? I, I think there's enough room there, I think that, that, that the parking ends a little, a little before that gate. Um can, uh do we have the bottom of that plan in, Abby? Can we see that there? Can, can we zoom in? Uh, uh, I don't know if we can zoom in on that bottom corner.
Yeah, is it perhaps enough room for a little cul-de-sac sort of thing?
You, you can see, you can see where the, 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 the space ends and the, and the gate sort of property line begins, there's, there's, there's quite a bit of room there. I, I don't think you have that same issue down there, Steve.
Okay, and I, but I was also concerned, because you have the loading areas down there, would there have been any large trucks where a large, you know, like especially a semi uh tra- trailer truck would have to back out, either back in or back out from there, because they would never be able to turn around.
I, I can comment, Merrick, sorry to cut you off, but that, we, we, we don't allow uh semis on, on the property, they're all box trucks, that's not gonna change.
Uh, I, this is Brian, sorry to jump in Stephen, but uh I'd also add, in talking to the, you know, those who run the building, right now, the box trucks come in and they back up to the receiving area and then pull away. And twice a week, if the compactor is, you know, that truck, the operations, they go on, they put two cones on the spaces that are needed for that truck to take the compactor, pull away and pull out. So they, they handle it now operationally.
Okay, fine. I'm done.
Abby, is there any more public comment?
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I see Shelley has her hand raised, so I'm just trying to unmute Shelley. Or, yes, okay, so Shelley is on the line?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh I'm Shelley Reaver, I live at 549 Canton Street, and my request is for the planning board. Um there have been many changes in the town personnel since the traffic mitigation happened for Canton Street, and I just want to very briefly go through that because I'd like to request to have Beta do another um assessment or evaluation of, of the Canton Street area in terms of the number of cars per day and the speed. So this is, this is how we got the mitigation that we have now. Um in two thousand, about fourteen and fifteen, many neighbors from the Canton Street and surrounding side street areas met at the Downey School um with town personnel, uh the Beta group, uh we had really lots of meetings, um and, and they were difficult, and in the end, Beta came up with a recommendation for approximately, and I, I could be, you know, wrong on this, but approximately between twenty-five and twenty-eight areas of traffic mitigation on Canton Street, some were islands, some were signs, um and everyone agreed to it. And then at the final meeting, um one of the selectmen, Michael Walsh, came and he actually sat down at the meeting and said, um we're gonna cut the number of traffic mitigation areas in half. And people were very upset because we had spent so much time on all this, we had a final agreement, and Michael Walsh's concern was because he rode his bike on Canton Street. So many of us then attended a select board meeting uh over at Carby Street and explained our being upset with the fact that we had spent all this time and agreed on a traffic plan, it was the exact one that Beta had recommended, it was actually the second one, the first one that Beta recommended did not work and the town police agreed it was unsafe. So Beta came up with another plan. So we went to a select board meeting and it was Michael Walsh, Nancy Hyde, Patahearn, and we expressed our concerns and they agreed to add in approximately four or five additional areas of traffic mitigation. And the understanding, and, and, and we agreed, but the understanding at the time was that they would come back to revisit this issue if the need arose. So my concern is not particular to Brigham and Women's or the condos, but since the last traffic assessment was done, that was done before the condos were built and before the Brigham and Women's initial building was built, and I just thought it would be worthwhile to take a look and see whether or not there needs to be more traffic mitigation. I will say, I live about a half a mile from the intersection of Canton Street and University Ave, and, and prior to the COVID situation, on many, many evenings, late afternoon and evenings, the traffic is backed up oftentimes to Hemlock and Hedrow, you know, there's a lot of traffic there. So I just think it, I, I'm just requesting that that be done so that we can see whether or not have the number of cars increased, has the speed increased, is it time to think about more mitigation? And admittedly, it's a, it's a mixed topic, I think, with neighbors, some people like the traffic mitigation, some don't. I'm not trying to advocate for it personally, but the agreement we had with the select board was that we could come back and revisit the fact that half of the mitigation measures had been removed practically single-handedly. That's it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that comment. Uh so I, I don't know if any of the board members want to um provide a reaction to that, I think this is something that, that we should add to a uh future meeting and perhaps the pedestrian bike and safety, this is, they've definitely been helpful in identifying these traffic safety um focused areas um and working with other groups within town to, to have those uh prioritized. Does any of the board members have a comment for that?
Uh with regard to uh running um a stats analysis, it seems like the town would say, we'll wait, it would be better if we waited till the bridges were all repaired on Canton Street as it turns into Denham Street when it crosses over, then upons it, the Amtrak line and then eventually um ninety-five. I, I think they're gonna say, right now, it's an unusual situation and whatever numbers are generated from a test are not going to be real once that's done. That's, I, I'm not gonna speak for the select board, but I think that's, that's certainly a possibility that, as to why um traffic does get backed up. I live on Everett Street, I do see it um a lot, but I understand there's a lot of uh development going on, on the road down there, so I, it, it seems like the select board would say before committing to uh traffic analysis, um they would say, let's hold off until we see what's gonna happen with this when it's done. They may not, they might agree to do it, I don't know, but that's just my thought.
I, I think it makes.
Could I just add for a minute that, uh the real problem here is the, is this ninety-three, ninety-five interchange and that whole interchange project has to be done. Right now, the uh Canton Street, Denham Street corridor there is just part of that project that's being worked on, the rest of it has to be finished. And ultimately, that's what will get the traffic off of Canton Street. Right now, most of those cars are still avoiding that interchange because it doesn't work as well as it should, and that's why you see all the cars coming down uh Canton Street and it has, they're not going to uh University Station, they're, they're heading to ninety-five south, and that's the problem there.
Okay, and then are there any other, um Chris, uh Dave, or Bill, do you have like any additional comments with regards to this um public comment?
It seemed like Shelley had one other comment she wanted to make there, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, but I just wanted to finish up on this one, so Dave?
I don't, no, I don't have a comment on that.
And Bill?
Uh, no comment, I think it's, it would have to be brought to the select, but anyway, it doesn't matter what, what we would say.
Okay, and then Shelley, did you have another question?
Uh just a comment, I, I wouldn't be opposed to waiting until the construction is done, I just think it would be good at some point to see how things are going on Canton Street. I will say that the backup, it's been occurring for a few years and it was before the, the bridge construction, but I agree that that could be affecting it and it's, it, this may not be related to University Station, but if Canton Street is getting very backed up, it just might make sense, and if it makes sense to only do it once, I, I, I would be fine with waiting. I just would like to see it be done at some point. Thank you.
Okay, so, so I'm on, I'm on the pedestrian bike and safety committee, so I'll make sure that it's on one of the upcoming meetings. Abby, can you make note of that also to add that to one of the upcoming pedestrian bike and safety meetings? I found that they do a good job with um raising the visibility of these items.
Okay, um.
Okay, great. So we've had the, we've had the present.
Okay.
Okay, great. So we've had, we've had the presentation, we've had comments from staff and, and consultants for the town. We've had public comment. Are there any other public comment?
No, I don't, I don't see anyone in the chat or anyone else with their hand raised unless, did Steve finish all those questions, I think? Yep.
And then as far as the, does the applicant have any other, any other final things that they'd like to say? Is there final statements and any response?
No, we've, we've completed our presentation. Thank you.
Right. Great. So Abby, do you want to walk us through the, the different the motions that, that are possible for this? And then as far as the, the findings and conditions?
Sure. In your, in your packet, the planning board has a draft list of some findings and conditions. This is on the screen. You also have a, a motion to approve per the findings and conditions prepared by staff in the memo I provided dated April 6. And this includes six conditions that I prepared based off of Beta's review and based off of what you heard tonight in the previous meeting in March. The first one is that all the conditions of the May 23, 2017 project development review approval remain in full force and effect. That includes all the items related to daily site cleanup. Condition number two, that the applicant shall provide a final updated operation and maintenance plan to Beta Group and the town planner for final review and approval prior to occupancy. This also does need to go back to you as part of the special permit application that they do have to file for the updated special permit to include the phase two for the chemicals. Condition three, suggested condition number three is in the event that the parking shields that the applicant has proposed for the parking garage, if those, you know, after construction, if we find that the, there's still glare onto the condos or nearby properties that the applicant has agreed to work on an, on additional solution to address that light glare and overflow. Condition four is the applicant shall submit an interim parking plan for approval by the building commissioner and the town planner that further describes how parking, including accessible spaces, will be managed during construction. Condition five, a final signage package that includes all the details, the size, the lighting, the coloring of the signs shall be submitted to me, the town planner, for review. That meets the requirements of the bylaw. If it's over that amount, then it goes back to the planning board for a project specific alternative plan. And my last condition is that the applicant shall provide a final as-built plan.
Okay, great. So if, if one of the board members would be interested in making a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that pursuant to section 971222, project development review, PDR, and section 97123, phase development of the Westwood zoning bylaw. And condition number four of the planning board's May 23, 2017 project development review for Brigham and Women's Hospital. I'll make a motion that we pursuant to all of that find that this is consistent with that approval. Make the findings that are listed in the draft memo and subject to the conditions that Abby just summarized.
Great. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion by the board? Any board member? Hearing none. So this is going to be a roll, vote, roll, vote. So, so we'll do it as the, the same as before at previous meetings. So seniority and alphabetically, I'm going to try to do that. So it'll be Dave would be the first vote.
Aye.
And the second would be Bill Delay.
Aye.
And then Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So the motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
And then Abby, do we need to close this?
Nope. It's not a public hearing, so you have now voted on the application.
Okay, great. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Thank you all.
Okay. So next on the agenda, let me, let me pull that up again. So next on the agenda is number two is 230 High Street is the applicant here to present. And just as a summary, this, Abby, this was the hearing that we heard before?
Yes.
And so they're going to give a quick summary and then we're going to, we weren't able to do a full public participation. So that's, that will be one of the focuses of this evening.
So. Okay. I see the applicant David Johnson and Daphna. Daphna Gordon is here?
Gordon.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. David Johnson from Norwood Engineering here. I don't know if Daphna, do you want to make any opening comments or take it right into the?
Yes. I'll just briefly say I'm representing Till Incorporated and our proposal is to build a five-bedroom home for individuals with acquired brain injury and the design is for single-family living to allow accessibility throughout the entire house. And it's a pretty simple design. We have parking sufficient for the people who will be working with the individuals. The individuals don't have their own cars and typically don't drive, so it's really just for staff who are living with them. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you, Daphna. David Johnson, once again. There were no updates. As the chairman said, this project was fully reviewed at the previous meeting. And due to technical difficulties, public comment was not available. Just as a quick overview for those who might be tuning in tonight, not available at the last meeting. As Daphna said, this is a single-family residence, both under the zoning bylaw and the state building code. Five bedrooms included in the house. We've provided parking and utilities to service the house. In terms of the site approval, we have approval for the fire, from the fire department. We have approval from, I believe, Beta. Their, their review did not reveal any revisions other than some, some conditions. We also have an order of conditions from the conservation commission. They reviewed an amended site plan last week at their meeting and voted to issue an order of conditions which covered the drainage design and the grading for the project. That's essentially what we're proposing. We're in front of the board for EIDR for the earth material moving. The bulk of that earth material moving is for the rear of the property where the turnaround is, which is area that was required by the fire department for, for access. Brian, are you on the line?
No, he's not.
He's not. Okay. I'll quickly go over the, the design. Abby, if you go back, okay, this is the design of the building. It's a single-story building with a historical New England flavor to it, with, with a barn attached to it using the footprint of an existing building. This is what you would see coming into the site from High Street. The parking is screened from High Street with landscaping and also topographically, it sits below the elevation of High Street. Abby, if you might, go to the next slide. This is the same elevation, looking at the site from the turnaround at the rear of the property. And this is a view of the, the site. This is the north side of the site. There's a patio and a retaining wall proposed along the building to reduce the amount of grading and the amount of earth material moving required to build the project. That's a brief overview of what's being proposed. We've reviewed the staff conditions of approval and have no problem with the conditions. And I'll turn it back over to Abby for there or to the board for any further questions and to Abby for the staff recommendation.
Great. So Abby, are there any, are there any comments from any, any staff or peer review?
Um, no, we did have staff comments and peer review comments earlier for the last, in advance of the last meeting. So all of our comments have been incorporated into the plans that you currently have before you. They've been updated as requested. Since your last meeting, the conservation commission, they did meet in March and voted and approved this application and closed their public hearing. So before you tonight is a limited EIDR and the earth material movement application. And, and when you're ready, next week, you can do public comments. But when you're ready, I have prepared a draft list of suggested conditions with your standard.
Okay. Great. So going in the same order. So, so Dave, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any additional questions.
And Bill Delay? You may be on mute.
Nope. He's ready. Bill?
I'll get back to him. So Chris?
No questions.
Yeah. And I don't have any additional questions from before. So Bill, again, do you have any questions? So Abby, what we'll do is we'll move on to, into the public questions. Is there anybody on the line that has?
I don't see anyone, but if there's anyone on the line, if you want to raise your hand or put a message in the chat that you have a question. We, if you go to the participant view button and then on the right bottom right, there's a raise your hand if you have any comments right now. I don't see any, or you can put a message in the chat.
Isn't there a phone number they can call also if they're watching on YouTube?
No.
Sorry, I thought there was.
If there's anyone, oh, I don't see any phone numbers here. There are, but there is, but I don't see anyone else by phone other than, other than staff here or applicants. Any phone numbers? There's no phone numbers in the list.
And Abby, there's no, no questions that you're seeing from the public for this?
No.
Okay. So I'll go back to Bill. So Bill, can you hear us on the line? And if you do, do you have any questions or comments?
Brian, it's kind of hard to hear you now.
How about now?
Yes, I can hear you better.
Great. So Bill, are you on the line? And if you are, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I asked all my questions last time. Thanks.
Okay. So we've had the presentation. We've had board questions or comments. We've done the public comments. So the applicant, are there any final, there was no questions provided to you. So do you have any final statements in addition to what you've already provided?
Uh, no, we don't.
No. We just look forward to starting and being part of Westwood.
Great. So Abby, do you want to share with us the, the prepared?
Sure. There's three waivers requested with this application. There are application waivers that are required for all EIDR summits. That's an exterior lighting plan, a traffic study and a presentation model. You should make a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve the waivers as requested by the applicant.
I'll second that motion.
And are there any discussion from the board? I hear a motion in a second. So any discussion? Hearing known. And then we'll go and roll. So Dave?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So that's four, four ayes.
All right. And
And then is there a, a motion to, to approve? Do you want to go over the the conditions for that? Or did you already show those on the screen?
Can you see, I have on the, can you see on the screen, there's a draft list of eight conditions that I prepared. They're your standard conditions related to the parking screening, as shown in the plan, the landscaping to be installed prior to occupancy, that the pavement on High Street be protected from the construction. Any future changes such as an expansion shall return to the planning board for modification. Condition four, the crushed stone entrance shall be replaced when it's built or no longer effective. Condition five is that the construction take place during the town's general bylaws related to construction noise. Condition six is related to providing a certification that the fill being brought to the site, it doesn't contain any hazardous materials. That should be submitted prior to bringing the fill and that should be submitted to, to town planner. Condition seven is the applicant is responsible for submitting any other permits that may be required. And condition eight is that the applicant's responsible for repairing any damage to anything within the public right of way with prior public works approval.
And then Abby, a third ninth condition also with regards to the copy of the decision and the project plan kept on site or no?
We can add that in. I forgot that one, but yes, we can add that ninth condition.
So the ninth would be?
Actually, it's part of condition eight, so.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Good, good eye. So those are the eight conditions. So does somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the limited EIDR and earth material movement application with the following conditions of approval, which are the eight ones that are on the screen.
And we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And is there any further discussion from the board? Okay. So we go by a roll call vote. So Dave?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So that's four to zero. So the motion passes.
Thank you. And then you should motion to, uh, miss close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to close this hearing.
I'll second that.
So I hear a second. Any discussion? So roll call vote. So Dave?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Chris? And aye for me as well. So that passes four to zero. So the, the hearing is closed.
All right. Thank you.
So, so I have next on the agenda is 72 Reservoir Road. So is the applicant here to discuss the earth material movement?
I'm here, yes.
Great. And we're ready for you whenever you are.
Okay. Good evening, Abby and members of the board. I'll just kind of rehash everything from last week if that's.
Yeah. So, and I didn't, I forgot to mention that. So this was, you, similar to the previous hearing, we, we received your presentation and then we wanted to have this meeting because of public comment. We were due to the connection before. So thank you. You can continue.
Okay. Just to rehash, my name is John Wall. I'm here on behalf of Walsh Brothers Building Company. I'm here for the earth material movement permit for 72 Reservoir Road. As of today, we've built a 4,600 square foot home that was approved by the Westwood Building Department and Conservation Commission via notice of intent. The approved permit has resulted in a grade change of more than 15% slope triggering this earth material movement. It's our position that as the home is built, we will not have any negative impacts on any of butters. We've also installed CULTEC recharge systems, a swale and a bio retention basin for other supporting our position. It's also, I'd also like to point out that the house is, you know, quite a distance from any other home. So we really shouldn't have any impact on your butters. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Abby, any staff comments?
I don't have any staff comments at time. I don't, staff has reviewed it and made comments at the last meeting. This project has also been. This project has also been approved by Conservation Commission.
Great. Um, so Dave, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, nope, I don't have any questions.
And Bill?
Uh, no.
And Chris?
No questions for the applicant.
Yeah, and there's no questions from me as well, um, in addition to what was, um, done before. Uh, so at this point, we'd go to public comment. So Abby, are there any questions on the line?
I don't see any, but we'll just reiterate, if there's anyone here, um, that would like to, um, ask a question from the public, you can, um, put your name in the chat feature and I would get that and unmute you. Or you could also, in your, um, click on the participant button and then at the bottom right, there's a raise your hand option. So you can raise your hand and I can call on you. Um, I don't see anyone, but let's just give it a moment.
Give it thirty seconds due to the, um, okay.
I see, um, I think everyone I see on here is staff. I don't, I see, um, Mr. Lally, if you want, do they have any? Let me just. All right, I don't see any here.
Okay. Okay, and so, uh, so does the applicant, um, uh, there was no questions provided to you. Um, do you have any final statements that you'd like to provide in addition to what you've already provided?
No, thanks.
Okay. Um, and then any final discussion from the board? Before, um, Abby, if you wanted to go over, uh, the conditions and?
Right. Well, there was, um, up on your screen and in your packet, you had a draft list of conditions. Um, condition one that I would suggest is just to make sure those, um, erosion controls are extended to full, um, limit of disturbance up to the driveway's entrance. Um, condition two, uh, that the applicant shall monitor the roadway for any, um, dirt that may come on to the roadway. And then, um, this is a topic of discussion for you tonight. I think, um, the board member that wasn't here had asked about, adding in the condition about providing a certification for the earth material. I think the, um, applicant, if you want to, um, Mr. Walsh, if you want to speak to that at all, he was questioning that, um, getting that at this point in the process, um, this application was a small amount of fill. The main trigger for this was the, the grading, the slope, um, of the new grades for the project. Um, and so he might be able to add a little bit more to that, but that's something he wanted to bring up with you tonight, that condition number three.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to request that we do remove, uh, condition number three. Our reasons are the main trigger, uh, for this review was the fifteen percent slope and not the fill quantity. Uh, the soil was, was brought from our Holliston Road project. It consists of, uh, crushed ledge rock. Um, and in this collapsing real estate, we find this to be, at this point, an unnecessary cost. Uh, depending on, you know, what we test for, this will cost anywhere between one and three thousand dollars. Uh, the process has already cost us over a thousand in permit fees and newspaper ads. Uh, we fill it. We've already gone through the conservation process, which has covered the grading for the home. And, you know, the times are going to be tight for us coming soon. So we just asked that we, uh, waive that. Thanks.
Okay. And, um, uh, Dave, uh, do you have a, um, a comment for that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with removing that condition. I think, um, as they pointed out, uh, the intention, you know, this was not about bringing in a lot of fill. It was about, uh, leveling the property or kind of, you know, making it and using what was there. So what triggered this was the, the grade increase. Um, so, I mean, I don't, I think it's fine to, um, to go with what we have here.
Yep, um, yeah, the same. Um, and Bill?
Yeah, I'd be willing to waive that, um, number three.
And Chris?
I also don't have a problem waiving, um, that approval, that condition, but I do think the board needs to kind of look at this. Um, two hundred, uh, is really not a large number and it does trigger this, um, this permit process. And if, we didn't used to request that every ounce of dirt be certified from a professional. This is a relatively new thing. So I, I think we need to, the board needs to relook, revisit this. Um, as the applicant indicated, anywhere from one to three thousand dollars for two hundred square yards of material seems a little, a little onerous, uh, on the applicant. And I'm not referring to this particular applicant, just any applicant in the future. So I think we might have to revisit our, uh, language in the bylaw about when this, I believe it says the board may request certification. We're not obligated, but maybe we need to identify what is a real trigger number or threshold, um, that we do request this.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chris. And I, and I'm okay with, um, removing this. So that would leave us with two, um, uh, two conditions here.
Right.
And the third would be struck. Um, and then also, so first, um, does, uh, board member want to make a motion for the, um, for the waivers that before here, the lighting plan, traffic, presentation model, and full drainage?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, waivers, um, because, so the exterior lighting plan, traffic study, presentation model, and that full drainage calculation, um, because they're not necessary for this, uh, single-family residence.
Okay, great. And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And any board discussion? Okay, so a roll call vote. So, um, Dave?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. And does somebody want to make a motion for the, um, uh, for the application itself?
I move that we approve the earth material movement application for seventy-two Reservoir Road with the following conditions, which are the two conditions that we agreed upon.
Great. And do we have a second?
Second.
And any board, uh, discussion? And so Dave?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So that passes four to zero as well. So thank you, applicant, for, um, for coming in.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you for coming back.
Me too.
Thank you.
Um, and if you also just close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a, uh, board discussion? So Dave?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So the, um, the hearing is closed.
Great. Thank you.
And so just moving on to, we have a few, um, so the, the meeting minutes for January seventh. So, um, I just had a few comments for those. And they're minor in nature. Um, if I can pull it up. Uh, so Abby, just, um, one was just a basic typo. So on page, uh, page three, uh, zoning amendment, article discussion, under staff comments, it's the second line, it just says public hearing out. So public hearing at.
Okay.
No big deal. Um, and then, um, I think that's, oh, and then on page five, under two seventy farm lane, under staff and board comments, um, it just said Mr. Gorman discussed the waivers with the applicant. Um, so I guess it just means that I, it makes it, I, I didn't, I didn't want, I didn't know if you wanted to just say Mr. Gorman, um, um, stated the waivers, because it's, it wasn't just me.
Yep.
Um, again, a minor comment. And, and that's it for me. Uh, Dave, did you have any comments for those minutes?
No, I don't.
Uh, and Chris?
No.
Or Bill?
No.
Okay, so I motion to approve the January tw, January seventh, two thousand twenty minutes with the, uh, the edits provided, um, by me included. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any, any discussion? And roll call vote. So Dave?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So that passes. So those are four, uh, four yeses. And then the next one is the January twenty-first meeting minutes. Um, I don't know, while I pull mine up. Dave, do you have any comments for the January twenty-first?
No, I don't have any comments.
Uh, and Bill?
Uh, no.
And, uh, Chris?
No.
Okay. I just have a few here. So on page, um, let's see. Um, I said a, I saw the word placeholder a few times, but I'm okay with including that. Um, and then the, I do have one before the, um, so under, I guess it's on page, page five. And that would be the, uh, which one is this? The affordability requirement. Um, so the temporary moratorium, the last bullet point where, uh, it says, Mr. Gorman would like to study this further and continue this discussion, but felt that this needs more time to review and the moratorium should have a clear benefit. This needs further research as he is concerned about growth in town. He recommends responding further after investigation, after the census data is known, to be able to respond, um, with how to deal with it. Um, there was another topic going on at that time. It just had to do with, um, um, just trying to think of it. It had to do with the, the, when the moratorium would go into effect. So Abby, could you add in something to that that has to do with, um, a question about the, um, the moratorium start date?
Yes.
Is that possible?
I do remember we talked about that. I'm just looking to see, was it anywhere else?
Yeah, it would just be somewhere in there, because that was one of my, um, that was just one of my concerns, is like, when would this start? Um, I guess that's covered by studying it further. We'll likely study this further and continue. Yeah, yeah. So maybe that's just covered under that. Yeah, that's fine. Um, and I don't have anything else.
So I, sorry, Brian, interrupt. I think we have it in the second to last bullet before the one you pointed out. We, it was, um,
Okay.
That's where it talks about.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
After the advertisement in the newspaper.
Great. So it's covered. So I have nothing. Um, does somebody want to make a motion to, um, approve the January twenty-first minutes?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, and any discussion? Uh, so a roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And it's an aye for me as well. So that's, uh, that approved four to zero. Um, and then the March second, I didn't have time to review that. So we can review that, um, at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody?
Sure.
It's okay with me.
Okay. And so I guess, um, and then before we close the meeting, um, Abby, we haven't received anything for the next meeting date. So.
Right. I would like to, um, we don't have any applications scheduled for your next meeting on April twenty-seventh. That was the original date we had selected. Um, so we'll cancel that meeting. So right now, your next scheduled meeting is on Tuesday, May twelfth.
Okay. Great. All right, uh, motion to close? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing, close the meeting. Sorry.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? So roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. So, um, the meeting is closed. Everybody have a great night.
Night.
All right, good night.
Night.
Thanks.